Thank you Commissioner Foster. Again Chuck Brown for the record, C.H.U.C.K., B.R.O.W.N., Director WSSC Waters Office of Communications. I'm pleased to highlight our extensive customer outreach efforts to encourage public participation and promote transparency for tonight's public hearing. We used a variety of methods to alert and inform our customers about tonight's hearing. A bilingual insert was placed into customer bills, starting in May and running through August. We placed a public notice in the Washington Post and the Prince George's Post on August 21st. We've been promoting this heavily on all of our social media channels. That includes Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and Blue Sky. On September 3rd, we sent out notice of the hearing to our 4,161 Constant Contact subscribers. What are we up to? Catchy Little Name. It's our bi-weekly newsletter. We share this information through that to more than 10,300 Constant Contact subscribers, two times, August 22nd and then again on September 5th. We also issued a news release on September 3rd announcing both hearings. The release was posted on the homepage of our website. All releases are issued to local media, key stakeholders, including elected officials. And speaking of elected officials, a letter transmitted via email from General Manager Powell announcing both hearings was sent prior to tonight's meeting. And lastly, information was posted on our website in several different locations. With that, I'll turn it back over to you, Commissioner Foster.
Before we begin, we'll turn it over to our General Manager CEO for some opening remarks.
Thank you CFO Masara and good evening to our customers. Thank you Commissioners for hosting this hearing this evening. I want to thank you, our customers, and all of our stakeholders for supporting our capital program that we are in the midst of delivering for this year for fiscal 2026. The team is here to talk about the updated capital improvement program for the year's fiscal year 2027 to 2032. I just wanted to note that we've had some recent discussions with around finances, financial management, and what is happening in the state of the water sector with regard to infrastructure and infrastructure investments as we're all advocating for additional external funds. And we, there has been a discussion that it's not only important to invest in new projects, new construction, new facilities, or replacement of water mains, but there's really a focus on deferred maintenance. Those projects that have been put off, and you see with failures around the country and other things that are happening, that it's important to make sure that we catch up on the investments that we're making. So as the team talks about the capital program that we've put forward, they will be talking about the projects that we're moving forward to make sure that we continue to make the investments and start catching up on needed investments in linear infrastructure as well as the facilities. I'm joined this evening not only by the CFO, but also Sunil Pandya, who is our Capital Section Budget Manager. Kavil Stanbury-Wilery will be giving our presentation from Engineering and Construction. She is our new Deputy Chief Engineer. And I also wanted to take this moment to introduce our new Chief Engineer who joined us just last week, and that's Alan Wong to my left. So we have a full complement of folks here, and I know that they are eager to get into tonight's presentation. So with that, I'll turn it back over to CFO Masara. Thank you.
Good evening Commissioners, customers, and the viewing public. Thanks General Manager Powell. For the record, I am Nitsi Timothy Masara, Chief Financial Officer, and I will be presenting along with our Chief Engineer the WSSC Waters FY 2027 to FY 32 Six Year CIP Program. I will begin by sharing our updated vision with you. Our vision of sustained and transformative change has four pillars. Pillar one, the workforce and workplace. We want the safest workplace possible, focusing on recruitment, retention, and engagement. We value and look to maintain subject matter expertise at every level and seek to build a high-performing team and have a top workplace culture by improving pipelines and pathways to the organization and removing barriers to upward mobility. Pillar two, the infrastructure. We want to provide reliable service to all, improve resilience and design and delivery while minimizing vulnerabilities and incorporating best practices and integrated planning while supporting economic development and the smart one water management. Pillar three, innovation and technology. We want to be a leader in research and technology adoption, cause disruption through innovation, facilitate right-size headcount, improved service delivery and operational efficiencies, and reducing operating costs. We also plan to generate alternative sources of revenue and invest in digital transformation. Pillar four, the service. We must have an anchor institution mindset, be cost-efficient and effective, provide exceptional experience for our internal and external stakeholders and customers by setting and exceeding service-level targets for response and resolution, strive for first-call resolution, and seek improvements across all touchpoints, and implement proactive, data-driven improvement. This vision is supported by our eight strategic priorities, which are workforce, development, and culture, asset management and infrastructure, reliability, jacket, where we are just, accountable, caring, community-focused, excellent, and trustworthy, affordability and financial viability, sustainability and resiliency, optimizing operations, customer engagement and partnerships, and digital transformation. WSSC Water is an anchor institution, and as we present ourselves as an anchor institution, it is important to note that our values are not changing. Instead, our impact is being amplified. This sustained transformative approach positions WSSC Water as a regional economic development anchor while delivering the infrastructure excellence our communities deserve. The six-year FY 2027 to FY 2032 CIP is $4.83 billion, and 1.6 billion, or 33% of this is related to mandated projects, specifically blue plains, sewer reconstruction, consent decrees, and other required regulatory mandates and agreements. The FY 27 capital budget is $759.3 million, and the mandated projects make up 36% or $288.1 million of this budget. The FY 27 capital budget is $43.8 million, more than that of FY 2026. We have the same mix of funding sources for the capital budget, with bonds still making up the primary funding source, although there was a $31.6 million decrease from FY 2026 levels to $493.2 million. State grants increased by $89.75 million to $133.1 million, and Pago, the third-largest category, is at $97.88 million, an increase of $4.88 million from FY 26. For the six-year CIP, there's an overall decrease of $46.4 million, from $4.878 billion for the FY 2026 to $31, to $4.831 billion for the FY 27 to 32. And the changes by funding source are summarized on the table on the below-left of the slide. Our FY 27 capital priorities are to invest in the water distribution and water collection programs, upgrade the water storage facility rehabilitation program and water resource recovery facilities to drive operational cost savings, continue to make funds available for regulatory compliance, lead in corporate reduction and PFAS, modernize our meter infrastructure, and continue the master and facilities planning and infrastructure investments. This slide illustrates how the six-year CIP 27 to 32 and the FY 27 capital budget is allocated between the eight CIP categories. The six-year CIP is represented by the blue bars and the FY 27 capital budget by the green Here, we have the year-on-year comparison of the eight CIP categories with the FY 2026 budget in the green bars and the FY 27 budget in the blue. You can see the change in the mix of projects in FY 27 with increases in innovation and investment priorities, inter-jurisdictional agreements, wastewater collection, and general facilities from the 26 levels. The breakdown of the FY 27 capital budget by implementer is presented in this slide. WSSC implemented projects represent 83% or $628.7 million, inter-jurisdictional are 14% or $104.4 million, and development projects or developer projects are 3% or $26.3 million. The component breakdown is as follows. Informational projects account for 57% or $430.7 million. Bi-county projects, 28% or $213.9 million. There are $92.4 million in water and sewer projects located in Prince George's County and $22.4 million in Montgomery County. This slide and the next have tables of the funding allocation by major component by each year of the six-year CIP. The project detail was included in the preliminarily proposed capital improvement book that was published in August. With this, I'll now turn it over to our Deputy Chief Engineer.
Thank you. And again, for the record, my name is Kavil Stanbury-Wilery, Deputy Chief Engineer at WSSC Water. One of the major enhancements we've made to our CIP process is the effort to develop wastewater, water, and facilities master plans. On the wastewater side, the 20-year system-wide master plan for the sewer system is a long-term, high-level planning document incorporating existing and ongoing studies. This will impact how we identify any system needs and also make recommendations for projects to mitigate those system needs. It will encompass the entire wastewater system and biosolids management. It will include regional planning, regulatory requirements, workforce and staffing needs, financial and budget planning. The 10-year elemental facility plans will include treatment and biosolids management for all our water resource recovery facilities. It will include our conveyance systems. The implementation of projects based on the master plans will commence in FY 2027. The master and facility plans will drive CIP decision-making for vertical and horizontal assets for future fiscal years. Similarly, we're undergoing an effort for the water system master plans. This plan is also a 20-year system-wide plan for the water system. It is a long-term, high-level planning document, and it will incorporate existing and ongoing studies. The development of the 10-year elemental facilities plans for water system will include our water supply systems, all of our treatment facilities, finished water delivery systems, or support buildings and grounds, which includes the depots, lab, support center, and fleet The projects identified from the master and facility plans will then be categorized using these drivers and prioritized. The drivers will be applied to all the projects. They include, if the project supports a new regulation, does it support health and safety, operational efficiency, reliability, and organizational initiative, and it will also evaluate what the impact is to the community. These projects will then be ranked based on their overall score across these drivers. The projects will then fall in one of our eight major categories, and those are listed here. Water distribution, wastewater collection, water treatment and storage, water resource recover facilities, mixed use, general facilities, innovation, and or inter-jurisdictional programs. The next several slides will highlight our major programs and projects that fall under these eight categories, and will also highlight the associated budget being requested for them. This first slide shows the Prince George's County major projects that fall under the water distribution system, and there are 10. The next slide highlights the two major water distribution projects in Montgomery County, and as you can see, there are two listed. Or FY 27 CIP based on our eight major categories. The first is the water distribution. The water distribution has three main programs. Water reconstruction program. The purpose of this program is to renew and extend the useful life of water distribution assets. The FY 27 goal for this program is to rehabilitate 35 miles. The requested FY 27 budget is $68 million. The next program is the large diameter water pipe and large valve rehab program. This program seeks to rehabilitate our large valve and large diameters within our system. The FY 27 goal for this program is five miles, and the requested FY 27 budget is $58 million. The third program under this category is our water main growth projects. There are four major projects under this program, and they are listed here. The South Potomac Supply Improvement Phase Two, the White Oak Water Main Augmentation Program, the Branch Avenue Water Transmission Improvements, and the Potomac Water Filtration Plant. These are funded by the system development charges. The total FY 27 budget being requested is $15.8 million. The next major category for our CIP is our wastewater collection system. This map shows the major projects associated with the Prince George's County Service Area. They are listed here from 11 through 31. The next slide shows the projects, major wastewater collection system projects associated with our Montgomery County Service Area. They are listed here from 3 to 14. Our wastewater collection category has, similarly to our water collection, water system distribution program, it has three major categories. Our sewer reconstruction program. This program provides for the comprehensive sewer system rehabilitation in residential areas of sewer pipe that is less than 15 inches in diameter. The FY 27 goal is rehabilitating 63.5 miles, and the associated budget for that is $114 million. Our trunk sewer reconstruction program provides for the inspection, evaluation, planning, design, and construction required for the rehab of sewer mains and their associated manholes in environmentally sensitive areas. For FY 27, we have a goal of rehabilitating 7.43 of these sewer miles, and the associated budget for this is $26.4 million. Our sewer growth program has five projects and one program, and they're listed here. In addition to the projects mentioned so far, we have nine wastewater pump station and four force main projects. There are nine listed here, but I would like to highlight two of those nine. Overall, for the nine pump station and force main projects, the FY 27 budget being requested is $26.65 million. the FY27 budget being requested is $26.65 million. The Arcola wastewater pump station and force main project accounts for just under $3 million of that $26 million. And Anacostia Two wastewater pump station upgrades will account for 12 of the $26 million being requested for that program. Overall, the rehabilitation and upgrades of the wastewater pump stations will help to reduce basement backups and sanitary overflows in our service areas. The next category is our water treatment and storage. And as mentioned earlier, there has been a push to no longer defer the renovations and rehabilitation needed for these facilities. The first one I'd like to highlight is a Potomac Water Filtration Plant Consent Decree Program. This program includes redundant finished water discharge mains, water pumping stations, upgrades, and other process improvements, including gravity thickener and filter backwash treatment. The FY27 budget associated with these renovations is $15.64 million. The program just highlighted and other similar projects will upgrade old infrastructure, increase in efficiency, reducing operations cost, and it will protect the environment by reducing solids returned to the Potomac River. The rehabilitation of our stand pipes and elevated tanks helps stabilize the water pressure and provide extra storage ensuring system reliability. Under our Water Resource Recovery Facility category, we have four programs. Two of them are listed here. The Parkway Water Resource Recovery Facility, and that is in Prince George's County District 1, and the Western Branch Water Resource Recovery Facility, which is in Prince George's County District 9. The Western Branch Process Strain Improvements will account for $36.5 million of the budget being requested. Our Mixed Use and Engineering Support Program category has overall 23 projects in our service area, and they are shown on the map on the right. Two of which are also highlighted on the slide. Our Hillsbury Wastewater Pump Station and the Mill Branch and Green Branch Wastewater Pump Station. Under General Facilities, I'd like to highlight two major projects. The Anacostia Depot Reconfiguration. The reconfiguration at the Anacostia Depot is the first WSSC depot that is being designed using sustainable design methods. The building will feature solar power, sewer thermal, and a green roof. The FY27 budget being requested for this reconfiguration is $24.04 million. The next upgrade is to our Support Center Building. This program provides for the planning, design, and construction to renovate the workspaces and upgrade assets at the support center that have reached the end of their useful life. The budget being requested for FY27 associated with these upgrades is $22.78 million. This map shows the two facilities upgrades just highlighted and also the additional consolidated lab upgrade to the upper-left corner. With respect to our Innovation and Investment Priorities category, I'd like to highlight three of our programs. One is our innovation, one is our meter infrastructure upgrade. The next is our Energy Performance Program. The next is our Lead Reduction Program and our PFAS Management Program. These four programs account for $69.5 million of the requested FY27 budget. Our inter-jurisdictional managed projects mainly include the Blue Plains Wastewater Treatment Plant and the Matta Woman Wastewater Treatment Plant. The DC Water Facility at Blue Plains, along with the WSSC Water Cost Share, is 4 to 6%. DC Water treats approximately 62% of our WSSC water wastewater. Funding for the Blue Plains Project is within three main divisions. The Liquid Treatment, the Biosolid Management, and the Plant-Wide Projects. And one additional division funds projects for all shared pipes and facilities outside of the wastewater treatment plant. The FY27 budget associated with this cost share is $99.78 million. Over 13% of the FY27 CIP budget is for the Blue Plains and Matta Woman Projects. Lastly, I'd like to highlight the appendix. This is the first time that we have been able to provide a comprehensive list of projects that is associated with the budget being requested. So we have more details that will be posted on our website, but this is in an effort to increase our transparency so that there is visibility on the budget that we're requesting and which projects exactly will be benefiting from the budget that we are requesting for FY27. This concludes our presentation. We're all happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I'm proud and excited to be back here after 20 years on the West Coast. And I remember the days when I worked here on some WSSC projects and helped with the Chesapeake Bay Restoration Program. And I really am also very excited that WSSC has such a customer service focus and also has a political will to invest in the expertise and the collaboration that's needed to execute a complex CIP program that you just heard. So I'll try my best to add value to the program, and I'm looking forward to being here. Thank you. Thank you.
The external funding sources, they're a mix of, we have the, it's the state revolving funds, which is a combination of grants and loans. So those are very helpful to us because what happens is that with the loan forgiveness piece, we don't have to pay that back. And with the grants piece, we get that at a really low interest rate. And then we also have some local government contributions, which is a really small amount.
So we have an asset management team that did a lot of research to determine what those scores should be, what those scores should be depending on the importance of each of the drivers. And so they're all weighted depending on their impact to the organization and to the customers. And so if there is a regulatory requirement, then that score would be higher because it is mandated and that there's a higher risk if that driver is not fulfilled, if you will. So we do have a team that went through and did an analysis to determine what were the drivers that impacted our projects? What were the considerations that should determine the score of our project and the weight that should be associated with each of the drivers?
So for each of this, for the regulatory, is that like 40 out of 100?
Yeah, that's the weight, yes.
All right, that's helpful. Well, again, thank you for your thorough presentations. And now we're going to go to the second part of the program. Just for informational purposes, the CIP is transmitted to the two county governments by October 1 of each year in accordance with Maryland State law. We will consider all public comments before transmitting the CIP to both counties. Transcripts of these proceedings will be included in the transmittal. I'm now going to open the meeting to public comments. For the record, please state your name, give your address prior to making your comments, and please limit your comments to three minutes. If your testimony is longer than three minutes, you may provide a written copy of your testimony to us now or prior to the close of the public hearing record period via email or traditional mail. At this point, we have several individuals who are going to testify. I would just emphasize that this public hearing is about the WSSCCIP. If you have comments on a different subject, please allow those individuals who have come to comment on the CIP to speak first. We welcome all comments this evening. So I'm going to begin with the sign-up sheets and bear with me in terms of pronouncing names. The first individual is Mr. Gaba, who lives in Gaithersburg. Is he no longer here? Okay, Ms. Gaba. Could you come? And please correct your name. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Solange Doragaba, 527 Summit Hall Road, Gaithersburg, Maryland. I wanted to know what the WSSC in its five-year projection is considering with the climate change, given that you have, you know, storms that are more severe, more frequent? And how is that impacting the infrastructure in terms of flooding? If there are mitigation, what's that considered into the budget? Thank you.
Thank you so much for the question because this gives us an opportunity to clarify that WSSC Water does not handle stormwater and flooding issues. However, we do coordinate and collaborate with both counties on their master planning efforts. And I know that that is something that they are looking at as they develop and update their master plans. And in our master planning and facilities planning, we are accounting for climate variance and impacts that impact our infrastructure. To just give you an example, at the top of this year, we had a significant number of water main breaks because of the changes and fluctuations in temperatures. So that's how we see, that's one way that we see the impacts of the changing climate impacting our infrastructure. And our way to address those changes will be incorporated in the master planning and facilities planning effort. It really comes to making sure that our infrastructure is reliable and that we're factoring in resilience efforts as well. Thank you for the question.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. Next is Mr. Lamari. Please, Mr. Lamari. Again, bear with me in pronouncing names.
Yeah, I'm James Lemire. I cover, I'm on the board for the Chesapeake AWWA. I'm a trustee on the board. My address is in Chesterfield in Virginia, but I cover Virginia, Maryland, DC, Delaware, Pennsylvania, and Jersey. My question really is for not only constituents, but more for the engineers, contractors, manufacturers. Probably a simple question that you guys can answer is, it's great, everything's listed here. Are these now available to be seen online? Now, is that live? And if so, can you drill down into it to some more of those details for people to prioritize? Because what's happening is people are getting more collaborative timing. I've worked with a lot of owners and getting the amount of contractors and interest is a challenge. So have you considered speaking with more owners to time large projects? Because that is a challenge that many contractors and people are facing.
Thank you for that question as well and raising that. It's an issue that we have been talking about recently. I know I presented at ACEC, which is the Council of Engineering Companies here locally. And at that very same presentation, I know Alan just presented at another conference with the same group of owners or utilities, rather. And all of us here in this region have very large capital improvement programs because the work is necessary and they have similar drivers as we do. And so we're not asking each other to delay work because everybody is trying to catch up on deferred maintenance, as I said at the top. But what we are looking to do is collaborate more on bringing more capacity to this region. And we have a specific focus on small and local business enterprises, definitely businesses that are in our region to make sure that they have more information on upcoming opportunities. So to your question, that information is online. And as Kavil noted, we want to make sure that we're not only transparent, but we're providing additional information or more detailed information so that folks know, specifically contractors, vendors, know what opportunities are coming up. We've had several outreach events in addition to the other places where we've presented to make sure that we're getting the messages out about the work that is coming up.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
We look forward to partnering with the section.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Again, thank you very much. The third individual signed up is F. Zhang. Please. Could you come up to? So come up, give your name and give your address.
Good evening. My name is Mr. Disouza, and I'm calling regarding the bills I get, which is far, far beyond what I used to pay. As far as June of last year, I was paying the bill. Can you? Can you? I was paying my bill. It was about, only for two of us, my wife and myself. I was paid about $80, $85, or $90 for three months. All of a sudden, last year, yeah, last year, it has changed. They wanted to attach the gadget where the meter reading people can take the meter reading sitting in the car from outside. And then the bills came up more than three times the amount. And I've been asking them, what is this? It's about $120 a month? $90, $95 a month? Instead of, I used to pay $90 for three months. I'm a senior citizen. I shouldn't have to go through this. That's one. Two is, why should I pay for the rich people? The rich people are using the Chesapeake Bay. They're using waters. They have their boats, their speedboats, catamarans, everything. They're contaminating the water. And to clean up the Chesapeake Bay, poor people like us, we have to pay it? You're taking huge some of the money from me. Why, and why should I go to someone else and ask, please, please, don't do that? No, you should be correct. I'm a taxpayer. I'm here since 1988. I've been having two jobs and three jobs sometimes. Now I'm retired. I'm 79 years old. I'm living on $1,020 a month social security. I'm paying Obamacare. They say Obamacare regarding health, it's affordable. It's no more, not affordable anymore. Only when it first came out, it was affordable. It was not even 100 or 105, something like that. It was not even $100 or $105, something like that. Now it's $185. And I have two insurances. I'm paying, $285 I'm paying. Also, I'd like to know, my bills are all wrong bills, I'm coming back again to the bills. The bills are so huge that from where are they getting this reading? I requested in my complaint, I had given two or three complaints. From where are they getting this reading? How are the gadgets being calibrated? I requested for the core signals to come and check the gadgets and see what's happening. They're the only ones, the engineers who can do it, not us. And definitely there's something wrong there. This is very sinful, what they're doing, to give me a bill for $345 per month or something like that. What is this? Also, madam, like, I'm allowed to talk?
Yes. I was just going to say though, you know, as I said in the beginning, this is a hearing about the CIP, which is the document that was discussed. If you have a billing issue, actually, our Director of Customer Services is right there. So I'm going to ask him to talk to you offline and see if he can address your concerns.
I know what you're saying, but I think you asked me, I had given several complaints, madam, to the WSSC. They don't care. Then also, I had given it to the dispute resolving board. They came up, came up something and not satisfied. I don't know if it's just an eye wash, what it is, just namkavasthaya, you know, namesake. Now, when, when I gave my complaints, I have the copies here of all the complaints I've given. And no one really satisfied my complaints and they didn't care. They also used to send me estimated bills. And I tweeted them on the phone. Now, this is an estimated bill. You give me the actual reading. No, no, you must pay the estimated bill. I said, no, I'm not going to pay the estimated. And all that's been carried over. You know, that, that's, I want to say something, please forgive me. I don't mean any disrespect. There's nothing but fraud. You know?
Well, again, I, I do understand your concern. I do want to iterate though. You said no one has gotten back to you. But I'm giving you an opportunity tonight to share your concerns with the Director of Customer Service. He's here. You can talk with him offline. You can show him your bills and tell him what your problems are. Okay?
I didn't understand.
He's sitting right next to you, and maybe we'll just kind of go offline.
Thank you, Commissioner Foster. I will make sure that we address the concerns, and I will also look at the documentation and review the concerns with the director as well.
Also, ma'am, and only, we were only two people living in the house for such big bills, my wife and myself. And now for more than six months, my wife is with my daughter's house. She got very sick in the hospital. Her sister had the same complaint, and her sister died. And she also was very sick in the hospital. And my daughter's taking care of her now. And now I'm one person, I don't know for how long this will be. I'm still getting used to bills, and this is not correct, madam. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for giving me this time.
Thank you for sharing that. And I'm going to ask John, our Director of Customer Services, to kind of follow up with you. You can share those bills that you brought tonight with him.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He's going to talk with you offline. And again, thank you for sharing those concerns with us.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. The next individual signed up is Jesse Thrill at 18, in Montgomery Village. Okay. You just wanted to let us know you were here? Okay, that's fine. Thank you for coming and thank you for taking an interest in the CIP. Again, I'm going to need help with the names here. Viselios Plangidus. And this is from Derwood, Maryland. And again, tell us how you really pronounce your name.
Good evening, everyone. Name is Viselios Plangidus. I live in Derwood, Maryland. One of the questions that I had for the committee is concerning microplastics and how those are captured in the treatment facilities prior to those materials being placed back in the bay. I was curious to see what kind of investments into the new technologies that WSSC is investing in to capture, you know, trace microplastics, hormones, et cetera, that end up back in the bay and ultimately in our drinking water. Thank you.
I'll take that one. We, we have some experts that I don't believe are here. But right now, primarily, our focus has been on PFAS. But we've also considered microplastics and any other emerging contaminants and are looking to do a pilot. That is the first step to look at what treatment measures we need to utilize to address the, the number of concerns with emerging contaminants. We started with PFAS because of the, the changes in regulations. So I would expect that we'll see, we'll begin to talk more about the, the efforts that the team did to study and develop a water quality master plan. We'll make it a point to provide an overview of that at a future commission meeting and can certainly follow up, have someone follow up with you to give you details on the study and the results and how we're moving forward, if that's okay.
Yeah, sounds good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And also signed up from the same address is Ms. Wayne Mako. Did you want to speak today?
Oh, I have no comments, but thank you for the presentation.
Okay, well, thank you for coming out tonight. And the final individual signed up is Sariae Gaines from Northwest Washington. I didn't hear you. Okay, well, again, you just came out to hear us. Thank you very much for coming tonight and taking interest in this presentation. Before I turn it over to the staff, I would like to ask whether there's anyone in the audience who did not sign up, who wanted an opportunity to voice concerns, so to speak, to the CIP. Or if not, at this time, I'm going to ask Sunil Pandey from our Finance Department to report on any updates or written comments that we received from the public record.
Thank you, Commissioner Foster. For the record, my name is Sunil Pandey. I am the Capital Budget Section Manager at WSSC Water. As of today, we have not received any written correspondence for inclusion in the record of this public hearing. Any correspondence received by the close of business on September 16 will be included in the next commission packet, become part of the record for this hearing, and will be transmitted to both the counties. The transcripts of this hearing will also be provided to the counties. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. That basically concludes tonight's public hearing. I want to thank everyone who came out tonight and took the opportunity to listen to the presentations on our CIP. At this point, we're adjourned. Travel safely going home.